Good morning. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I call the meeting of the Minnehaw County Commission to order. Thank everybody for being here. There are meeting documents available to review on the end by Commissioner Heiburger. And also, a lot of the reports and such are also on file with our Auditor's Office. So if anybody would ever like to see the reports that we reference, they are public record and available to be reviewed. Please silence your cellphones, and if you need a listening device, ask one of the county staff, Carol or Craig, they can help you with that. Move on to routine business, and I need a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Moving on to approving the commission meeting minutes for February 16th of 2021. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Bills to be paid in the amount of $1,132,024.87.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Same sign. No opposition. Motion carries. Comments on the bills at all?
No, sir.
Okay. Reports, we have numerous reports from Minnehaw County Regional Juvenile Detention Center Statistics, County Medical and Subsistence Expenditures. I guess what I want to point out is the Human Services 2020 Annual Report from Minnehaw and Lincoln County. I did take the time to go through that. Very interesting, especially in the year of COVID. So there are numerous other reports. And moving on to the Auditor's final, Office Final Financial Reports for 2020. Good morning, Kim. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. I'll just take you a quick run through our numbers for 2020, as well as where we're at through January of 2021. We'll start out looking at 2020 expenditures. You can see that we finished the year at 97.6% of our budgeted expenditure level. That's attributable mostly to personnel expenses. Salaries and benefits finished the year at 97.2% of budget, which is about $1.2 million favorable to budget. Our other expenses were about $300,000 favorable to budget at 98.6%. So expenditures came in favorably. If we jump next to revenue, that's where we see the real variances to budget. Overall, our overall revenue came in at $81.4 million, which is 128% of what was budgeted. Well, if you look at taxes, taxes, property taxes came in at 99.1%, which is a tenth of a percent better than we realized in 2019. And our biggest benefit came in the other revenue category, where we were at 207% of budgeted revenues attributable mostly to COVID relief funds that we received during the year. Also favorable bank franchise tax and Board of Prisoners and juvenile housing fees that we realized from other counties' housing inmates and juveniles in our facilities.
Just a comment, Commissioner. When we started this COVID mess a year ago, we had great concern that we would not be getting paid our property taxes, and that did not come to fruition. And I would just say thank you to our taxpayers for recognizing the importance of paying county government for their school districts, for the municipalities, and for us to continue to run our businesses. And we are very fortunate to be in that situation, that people paid.
Absolutely.
Comment on the bank franchise tax?
Yes. I did provide you with about a 10-year history, 15-year history of bank franchise tax, so that you can see how volatile that has been over the years. Fortunately, in 2020, we're at kind of a peak position, where we actually realized $2.5 million in bank franchise tax this year. That's up about $240,000 from last year. And as you can see, significantly increased from 2016 through 2018 levels.
Commissioner Benega.
Kim, the 128% of general fund revenue, could you tell us what percentage of the COVID funding that we got represents the 128%? Because it appears that that's got to be a significant piece of the dollar amount.
It is. I can just calculate that quickly. It's 13.3 million of 63. About 21%.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bender.
Well, I just, I wanted to thank him for this slide on the bank franchise tax. On school board, bank franchise tax was a big part of our financing, and here it's as well. And every year, it's like, huh, how should we budget for it? And, you know, sometimes there's a push to budget more aggressively after you see a couple of good years, and then as soon as you do that, then it turns around and bites you. And so I appreciate the conservative budgeting we've done. I mean, it's always nice to get a nice surprise when it's high. But I've talked over the years to multiple, multiple people, and nobody has any real way of forecasting this that I've been able to figure out. It just kind of is what it is.
It's been very unpredictable. I'm just wondering, when did we get the bank franchise? Because it's always seems like kind of an odd time. You don't know when you're getting it in 2020. So did we get it in 2020, or did we get it January 2020?
We actually received it in January of 2021, towards the end of the, we usually get it towards the end of that month. And then we do, we accrue for that franchise tax, because what we're receiving in January is actually our apportionment of the 2020 taxes. So we recognize it as 2020 revenue, even though we hadn't received it quite yet. We've got a receivable on the books for that.
Thank you.
And just to Commissioner Bender's comment as well, we did budget $1.2 million in 2020, which is also what our 2021 budget level is in this revenue category.
Thank you, Kim. This is a report. No need for any action.
The highway report?
I'm sorry?
The highway report.
We've got some 2021 information as well. If we start looking at, first of all, the general fund cash, of course, is significantly higher for all those reasons we just covered, with our 2020 revenue coming in better than budget and expenditures under budget. So we're about $20 million favorable from where we were a year ago at this time. In the highway fund, we are about $7.5 million below where we were at this time, and that's a function of the significant projects that were completed in 2020 that spent down that cash reserve. And then expenses and revenues, it's still very early to really look at any kind of trends, but I can report that our expenditures are at 8% of budget compared to 10% last year at this time. So they are trending favorable. That's mostly because of the timing of payrolls. In 2021, we had two pay periods. In 2020, we had three. So it's really just a timing difference at this point. And on the revenue side, we're also trending favorably to where we were last year at this time. But again, it's just the first 30 days of revenue, and we really won't see property tax revenues coming in until that March-April timeframe.
Commissioner Benega.
Can you just go back, I can't write fast enough to your speaking ability. The general expense expenditures, you said payroll was down 2.4%?
Yes. As a percentage of budget.
Right.
It's, we're at 8% of budget right now compared to 10 a year ago.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's the timing of payrolls.
All right. Thank you very much, Kim.
Thank you.
Moving on to personnel actions. Looking for a motion to approve routine personnel.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Same sign. Motion carries. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have a couple items for you this morning. The first is to approve the hire of Renee Voss as a county manager with the Auditor's Office at $34.19 an hour effective March 1st. The reason this is showing up as a special commission action request is it's outside the hiring range of Step 1 to 4. The reason for the request is due to Renee's qualifications and experience. She comes to the county with a bachelor's degree and over 25 years of directly relevant experience managing staff of up to 40 people. So that is the reason for the request.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose. Same sign. Motion carries. Next one.
The next item is also an exception from our salary policy. Although we have done this in the past during interim periods, the request is for a 10% adjustment for both Shannon Schultz and Hank Trumbull, who will be filling in while DJ, after DJ leaves our organization. So it'd be effective starting February 27th. The 10% for both of them really stems from the fact that it's a large organization and the number of projects that the highway is facing right now with the new building and some of the projects that they have going on.
Busy time of the year for highway. Looking for a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Comments?
The highway department clearly has a division between, you know, the folks driving the snowplows and the folks designing the bridges. And so, you know, having a separate leadership in those groups is why we went this way.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Carrie.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a numerous amount of abatements. And Carol, we talked about, we're doing these individually still?
Mr. Chair, Carol and I should discuss that. I think it's appropriate if we itemize or make it clear on the record that you're grouping them by owner request, that we can do one single vote on those. We won't save you folks' time this morning and all the publication costs as well. As long as it's itemized clearly on the record that we're grouping those, whichever number together.
So A through H are all for the same individual, so we'll take those as one vote then. And one explanation, I guess, too. Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, Chris Lella, equalization. Yes, items A through H is an error on our part in the appeals process. So this, I don't even know, MFR XIX purchased a bulk of properties last year for less than our assessed value, so it should have been a good sale. And when we pushed it into our appeals program to the city to represent that as a good sale, basically give them their sale price for that year, it didn't write back into the program. It went through as an appeal that wasn't acted on. So they contacted us this year when they got their tax bill, and we went through the history and saw the documentation and said, yes, this was a good sale. It didn't get carried forward in the system. We found about three or four others like that. So we're making, taking some steps this year to literally not trust the data goes from the program into the other program. We are going to be hand-entering those changes so that it does not occur again. So yes, we recommend approval of this abatement as a good sale, which basically assesses or taxes them at their sale price for that one year. We're correcting those taxes. They are back at market along with everyone else this year.
So I guess for the record, we have parcels 61754, 61755, 61756, 61757, 61758, 61759, 61760, 61761, all for 2020 property taxes. I would be looking for a motion to approve this abatement.
So moved. Benega.
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Same sign. Motion carries. Olivia.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call vote.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Harkey?
Aye. It is highlighted in bright pink to say roll call vote, so thank you, Olivia. All right. Moving on, we have one for the city of Sioux Falls, parcel 91419. Chris.
Yep, this one here is a straightforward, city is exempt, once they purchase that property, it's exempt from that point forward, but we can't correct a value. We have to do an abatement, so we're recommending approval.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Harkey?
Aye. Motion carries. Jay, Northridge Development LLC, parcel 77514, 2020 property taxes.
This one here is a similar issue with MFXR. The board took action on this one here, and it was entered in the program, and the value didn't translate forward into our values program. So again, we'll be looking at doing manual entries on these as opposed to transferring data. So we recommend approval of this one as well.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Harkey?
Aye. Motion carries. John Jocelyn Cook, parcel 91203, 2020 property taxes, $449.70.
This one here, I don't really have a good explanation for, other than we have an entry error in this one here, where we valued them at more basement square footage than what they actually had. So they had some questions on it. My appraiser went out there and looked. I don't know if it was a data entry error, if it's been sitting that way for some time, but they did not have it. It was clearly there. We identified it through past notes. I think it got keyed in, the wrong square footage. So we are recommending approval of this one.
Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Harkey?
Aye. Motion carries. Last one, Elderly Freeze, parcel 49493, 2020 property taxes and a amount of $401.38.
Motion to approve. Second.
Call the roll.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Harkey?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Travis.
I'd like to ask Chris, so were all these called to your attention by the taxpayer then?
One of them was. Well, two of them. The MFXR, they'd called, an attorney representing them had called. So that was caught. The basement finish was a taxpayer. I think we've got one or two others that we actually caught. The appraisers had gone back through their last year's files and looked at them. And it's ironic, because when I first came here, the first year, I had kind of the similar thing. I had it, and we couldn't figure out what was going on. And last year, I have my, once we have an appeal or a correction and we put it in, it generates the minutes. And I went back through the minutes, and I've got check marks that I verified every one on the minutes. And then we found that these were in the program, acted on, we have the sheets, but they didn't make it into the minutes, therefore the data didn't transfer forward. So I took the time last year to manually check each one, but it wasn't on the list. So I'm not trusting any of it this year. We are going to go back to the original paper and go one by one by one by one, regardless of the output. Side note, just for the Commissioners, our assessment notices should have gone in the mail yesterday, and I do believe they have, as we've already gotten a phone call this morning. So from now until for the next two weeks, we're going to be busy.
We're slowing down the postal service. All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Notice and requests, non-planning and zoning notices, none. We have a petition for compromise of lien, DPNO 103151, in the amount of $6,931.83. Good morning, Melinda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melinda Storey, Commission Office. The action requested today on this lien is to compromise and release the lien in full with payment of $3,600. The lien represents poor relief for medical assistance. The petitioner is in the process of refinancing his home at 6604 West 52nd Street in Sioux Falls for $183,000 in an effort to reduce his monthly mortgage payment, and is expecting to close on March 3rd, 2021. He explains the circumstances of the lien balance and that he's a seasonal worker who cares for his two children over the winter. The petitioner's financial statement notes an income of $24,000, total assets of $235,300, and total liabilities of $175,938.82. The 2019 income tax show an income of $18,331 and a refund of $6,035. He's asking for your help to move forward with the refinance of the home and is actually here to answer any of your questions.
All righty. First of all, I'll turn it over to the, well, I guess I will turn it over to the petitioner. If you have any comments you'd like to add to the information we have.
Yeah, I guess I don't have a whole lot to say, except for whenever I receive assistance from the county, I was very grateful, but I was not aware that it would turn into a lien. So then with the housing market being the way it is, I tried to refinance my house to save money, save a lot, and my monthly payment, cut down on my monthly payment. And the bank allowed me to get to almost my closing date before they informed me that I had this lien. I was already so far into the process now where I was paying money for appraisals and paperwork and processing there. If I have to cancel it, the refinance, and I still owe them money. And now I just informed two, I think two and a half weeks ago when the bank called me, I called them in his office right away. And so that's kind of the situation I'm in right now. I'm in between two hard spots here. I brought all the money that I have to satisfy this, as much as I could get this satisfied and just taken care of. And like I said, I wasn't informed that it would turn into a lien. And if I probably wouldn't have tried to refinance my house had I known that, I would have tried to settle this before I would have moved forward with anything like that. I can't answer any other questions.
Okay. Turn it over to the Commissioners. Commissioner Heiburger.
So to me, reading your background, it seems to me, you know, your petition, your request, that this is a financial hardship to you. Sometimes we accept less than the 50% of the lien when it is strictly financial or poor relief payments. And so I'm just wondering what financially you could afford if it's less than $3,600, or I don't want to leave you strapped with two young kids at home. Being a taxpayer is super important, keeping in your house is important. I don't want you coming back to the Human Services and now needing to apply for poor relief, and it just puts you back in the same situation. So I would be interested in hearing what you think is reasonable for you.
I guess, well, I have $300 left for my, I took $3,600. It was everything I had to, I was feeling pretty good, because that was, and that was three months of mortgage payments I had with the bank, you know? And I was feeling pretty good about it. But in order to move on to refinance, I think that is the most important thing for me right now, that will allow me to, give me some breathing room in the future. I mean, I guess I'm willing to give you $3,600. I don't want to try to put a number on, seem greedy and try to get away with it cheap. I don't want to tell you, oh, $1,000, you know, come across that way. I want to make it right anyway.
$1,000 is actually what I wrote on my paper before I even asked him that question, but I really leave it up to the Commission to have further discussion on, I just don't feel like it makes a lot of sense to leave him with two young kids and trying to make his life work on $300.
Commissioner Bender.
Well, I mean, and I would note as well, that you have been responsible in the sense that other debts that you've had to the county, you have paid, and we always really appreciate when people do pay off debts that they know that they have. And you have been very responsible about doing that. In light of the circumstances, I would be willing to make a motion to compromise your lien for $1,000.
Second.
Motion and a second. Other comments?
I appreciate the thoughts of my fellow Commissioners there. And, you know, again, we've seen this type of issue come up in the past. I would have gone for more, but I think $1,000 in the hand is better than something more in the bush, so I'll go along with it.
We are sitting here at somewhat of an advantage in that we know and understand what the poor relief was specifically for, so it does kind of maybe change the outlook that we have versus what other people might see. So do I need a roll call on this? Yes, I do, don't I? Okay, so we have a motion and a second for $1,000 to compromise the lien. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Harkey?
Aye. Motion carries. I can work with Melinda.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you. We are now at the opportunity for public comment. Would anybody here like to address the Commission? Nobody running down the hall? All righty. Onto regular business. We have a briefing on our 4H extension programs. Chuck Martinell, and Chuck, I believe, is on the phone. We're just trying to limit our briefings to 10 minutes, Chuck, so appreciate your consideration of that. Oh, and there he is, not on the phone.
He's coming.
Oh, he is on the phone.
Got my notes on the phone. Chuck Martinell, Minnehaw County 4H, SDSU Extension Program. Just going to give you a quick briefing. I'll keep it short as possible. Minnehaw County 4H is a youth program that's part of the Extension Department here in the county. We serve all the youth in the county, as we are well aware, there's about 40,000 kids in this county. In 2020, just like other departments, just like everybody else, we were faced with a challenge. We spent about three months planning for events that didn't happen, which is kind of frustrating when you look back at it. You spend all this time preparing for things, but at the end of the day, it's just out of your control. We did manage to have our water festival last year, which we are partnered with, have been partnered with for about 25 years. That had about 2,400 students attend. That took place in early March, right before things went south on us. Going forward, we were able to do some in-school and after-school summer programming. One of our biggest programs, as I said before, is chicks in the classroom. We continued doing that last year. We had 39 classrooms take place, which is actually an increase, because teachers were looking for extra. The difficulty was I had to do it virtually, which I had to learn how to do some Zoom editing and editing of my videos. So it was a little bit more of a challenge than doing it in person, but at the end, I was able to connect with local producers and actually get kids to take tours of the farms virtually, of local farms here in Minnehaw County, which was even more beneficial than me coming in, talking about a farm. They had the farmer directly telling them what they did every day, showing them exactly what that process looks like, and showing them the animals they raised, which for a lot of these kids, it's kind of their first exposure to a farm. We also took part in the 4H Summer Spotlight Series. That series was a huge success. We were able to piggyback with other 4H programs and state, and each of us took an area of expertise and did a week on it. Between Nathan and I, we took on six weeks of different programming, from everything from outdoor education to science to STEM. And we even dabbled in outdoor cooking for a while, so we're all still alive, so apparently my cooking's not that bad yet, which was really great for us, because we had kids who took part in different programs. With this outdoor summer series, there were Zoom lessons, there were challenges each week, and we also had enrichment-type stuff where they can, self-guided learning. For the fall programming of 2020, I did do Butterflies in Motion, which is usually our second biggest program we offer. This year, we only had 11 classrooms take place, which for what I was thinking, if we can get three, was going to be my, would be successful. All schools reported a successful partnership with us. We continue doing boys and girls virtual programming. Nathan does that. Our clubs continue to meet pretty much throughout this entire pandemic with social distancing. We did not meet in March, April, May, just under the guidance of SDSU. But since then, we've been meeting as normal with restrictions since early July. And then this is summer. We also did workforce question and answer for older youth. We had industry leaders come in and provide information about jobs, had youths submit questions to them about how they would get that job or questions about what they liked about the job. One of the big changes for 4H going forward is more workforce prep. And that comes in different, different ways. And we're going to approach it more, just that learning curve of exploring more knowledge about working. A lot of times I get asked in 2020, what did you guys do? Did you must have the summer off? We did not have the summer off in 2020. We did every one of our events and contests we normally do. We just did it differently and we had to plan for it three different ways. So we did do all of our course events. We did all of our in-person events. We continue to do everything that we normally do. We just did it with the guidance. We did safely. Our clubs continued to volunteer throughout this time. Sorry about the, the image is kind of small. That was one of our clubs who had an article done on them. Clover Creations, they did a care packages for nurses. Just an example of one of the things our clubs continue to do. We continue to do ditch cleanups, park cleanups. We continue to send things to nursing homes, provide services, volunteer services as much as possible. Our volunteer hours weren't that much affected because a lot of our volunteer stuff is outdoors, but they were still affected. Moving forward in 2021, we are looking at trying to get as many events this year in person, including the Sioux Empire Fair. But we will once again do it with the guidance of SDSU and with the fair. We'll work together and make it the best possible solution for both of us. We are once again going to do a hybrid version of Chicks in the Classroom. I have about 40 classrooms signed up to do that. We start that right after Easter. And looking forward to taking part in that. It's usually a lot of fun for me. We are going to go back to after-school in-person programming in the fall as those programs that we partner with will allow folks to come back in to do that programming. This year, something new is we're doing horticulture, which we haven't done in probably about 10 years. There is a huge interest in learning how to, how, learning about plants. And I'll be teaming with master gardeners and myself, and we're going to be doing some workshops and training some kids in how to grow a garden and other things of that nature. So I'm looking forward to that because I have a passion in gardening. And the last thing is we do a YQCA every year, which we teach, teach the kids how to, it's a different topic every year. And all the kids in 4H who raise livestock have to take part in it. And each year is, each year we cover a specific thing from animal, animal safety to feed, how to read a feed label. It's basically their classroom work for the year, and then they go back home and they put that to use. The reason we do that is so we know each kid's had the same amount of training and we're not just assuming families are teaching this on at home. Because sometimes they don't. Most times they do. But, and that is it.
All right, Chuck. Thank you very much. Questions? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just to thank you, Chuck. I'm Chuck's liaison and just thinking outside of the box and coming up, continuing to run all of his programs with the youth. And since Chuck's come on with us about five years ago, six years ago?
Almost nine.
Oh, my gosh. Nine years ago, our 4H has continued to grow in Minnehaha County, which is obviously what we want to see. And we share his position with the state, so he isn't, he is not a full-time Minnehaha County employee. I think it's half Minnehaha County and half state, or it might even be a fourth Minnehaha County and half state.
Nathan's half and half. I'm all-state.
You're all-state. Okay. So he comes to us as a gift. So thank you for your work.
I have two questions. What are chicks in the classroom?
The chicks in the classroom is a program I began about seven years ago. Each classroom gets an incubator and then I bring in two dozen eggs that are fertilized. And the kids learn about how the eggs are fertilized. They learn about the parts of an egg. And then we hatch the eggs in the classroom. And they go through the 21 days of learning that knowledge of how the egg is developing from that embryo all the way up to that chick. And then the kids can watch them hatch. Then after they're done hatching, they spend three to four days learning how to care for that animal. And then all these chicks are donated to different 4H families who are willing to take them on for, as a project.
Wow. How many chicks are donated?
About 40 classrooms.
As I say, on a good year, we usually get about four, four to 500 chicks that hatch.
Good job. And then a little bit more about the horticulture. I know that there's an active community garden in the area. Are, do you have involvement in that or is there a way to expand on that? What are your thoughts?
So community gardens, master gardeners usually, or in local, local groups. I know like Groundworks Midwest does a lot of community gardens. But for us, we, we try to, we handle more of the education component of it, just because we don't have, we don't have ground. To really do a community garden well, you get to have an area to, to have that good soil and to do it. So for us, horticulture workshops, it's more of that plant ID, how to, how to recognize good produce, how to recognize when things aren't going so well, diseases, and how to fix that.
Thank you very much, Chuck. Appreciate it. Great update.
Thank you.
Now we'll have a briefing on Southeastern Behavioral Health Directions for Life. Chris Graham and Chris is on the phone? We're not sure.
I saw her earlier on Zoom.
There, can you hear us now?
Oh, we can hear you. There you go.
Good. Okay. Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Chris Graham, CEO of Southeastern Behavioral Healthcare, and I have three other people that are going to help present on different pieces of Southeastern. So just very quickly, I just want to say thank you for having us today. Southeastern has seen an unprecedented year of services to provide. The effects of social isolation with COVID has brought us more than 15 referrals a day for services. And I want you to know that within this last year, we provided $9 million of services to residents of Minnehaha County. So we are pleased with the programming that we can provide. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kim Hanson to talk about mobile crisis team.
Good morning.
Morning.
So in 2020, we had a total of 358 calls to the mobile crisis team. We responded to 304 of those calls and 54 of them were declined for the reasons stated below. So that continues to leave us at a 92.45% diversion rate. Of the 304 calls that were responded to, 265 of those individuals did remain at home. 11 went to Avera Behavioral Health on a voluntary basis. Five of those individuals, five of the 304, went to either detox or another referral source. 23 of the 304 did go on a mental illness hold. We, our total hours this year were 170.22 and our average call time continues to remain at about 56 minutes, so roughly an hour per call. And then again, that male age group of the 21 to 30 range continues to be our highest number of calls that we receive. And our highest referral source continues to be the Sioux Falls PD. Any questions on any numbers?
Commissioner Bender? I don't have a question, but we don't often get to see you face-to-face. And I just want to thank you for the incredibly impressive work that you guys do. We get these reports on a monthly basis and it's just always amazing to me to see how well you are able to divert people, keep them in their home and address their needs in other ways. And it's also, you didn't really reference it, but you guys do a satisfaction kind of survey and your highly satisfied numbers are always like through the roof. And so we just really appreciate the work you do for the citizens of Minnehaha County.
Thank you so much. I do appreciate that. I did want to point out that due to COVID, our numbers were down this year. Typically, we would be looking at a much higher rate than that 358 mark. We did make an effort to do our calls via iPads, but unfortunately, that doesn't always work. And so we are going back to our face-to-face calls on March 1st, and we're hoping that the numbers will pick back up. So if you notice the, the decrease in numbers, that's why.
We only want the numbers to pick up so that we can divert people from the other option, not because we're looking for people with problems, obviously, so.
Right, right.
Alrighty.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I am glad to, thank you. Debbie Faini is going to come up and talk about some of her work through the Public Defender's Office. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So Debbie Faini with the Alternative Sentencing Program, which was created about four and a half years ago as a community partnership with the Public Defenders Office and Southeastian Directions for Life. It was designed to reduce incarceration costs by maximizing the community-based services in lieu of incarceration, which keeping the clients out of jail decreases the cost of accounting in the state. And it also decreases the risks of these clients losing their SSI benefits, SSDI benefits, employment, and housing. And just to give you an example, we've been working with a, a young lady for the last couple of years. She was looking at several years in the women penitentiary. And the last two years, it's about a $60,000 savings to the state. And then she also was going to be looking at county time. That's about $12,000 savings on that. It also gives the lawyers access to different avenues for advocating for their clients. It helps address underlying social and environmental factors that contributes to their involvement in with the court. As you can see, some of the services that Southeastern provides to our clients, the case management, psychiatric, individual and group therapy, recovery services, medication management, employment connection, and then we have a benefit specialist that helps with the SSI and SSDI. You can tell in 2020, we almost doubled our numbers in referrals to 469. Those referrals come from different venues now through attorneys, Mag Court, the ICRT, and clients and family. Just recently, we started, I attend the Mag Court every day. And those people that don't get a PR bond, I review their case to see if there's any evaluations that they need, connection with services to help them get out of, get a PR bond earlier than later. The ICR team is an in-custody review team. I participate with that every two weeks. We review, review everybody that's in custody to see if there's any alternatives to helping them get out of jail also. And then clients and family. About 80% of those referrals do get evaluations, whether it's a mental health, chemical dependency, or integrated, which is both. And then we assist those people with the recommendations, whether it's inpatient or intensive outpatient, mental health resources. We make sure and help them follow through with those recommendations. Due to our increase, we've had to add another part-time therapist to our program in addition to the team of therapists that we already have on hand to assist with those evaluations. And we're looking at our fourth year fundraiser this year on November 9th at the Minnehaha Country Club. This benefits this program. And I encourage you all to go out to our website and look at the media, look at all the videos that we have out there. We have great testimonials from family members, clients, and attorneys. Any questions?
I think we're good.
Awesome. Well, now I'm going to introduce you to Melissa Tower with the Mental Health Court.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is, my name is Melissa Tower. I am the Clinical Director of Adult Services at Southeastern, and then I also serve on the Mental Health Court team. The mission statement of the Mental Health Court is to enhance public safety and improve the quality of life of the participants, the family and the community throughout the state. There are currently two mental health courts in South Dakota, one in Rapid City and one in Sioux Falls. And we work to do this by holding them accountable through a judicially monitored regimen of treatment and supervision to promote that long-term recovery in their mental health. The overall program goals that we have are to increase the public safety numbers for the communities in the state, decrease the amount of time that people are incarcerated, improve their social functioning, and then offer them the treatment opportunities that they may not have been connected with in the past. And then, of course, the other overall goal is to reduce those recidivism rates of the people that participate. So to be considered for our program, the individuals need to be 18 years old. They need to be facing criminal charges and then also be eligible for probation. They do have to agree to participate in the program and then follow the rules. There is a handbook that they're provided that let them know what the rules of the program are. A lot of those are relative to attending their treatment, taking medications if those are deemed appropriate for them, and then also following the terms of their probation. That individual needs to be experiencing mental health issues that meet SMI and impact criteria. So what we're basically looking for there is somebody who's maybe been hospitalized due to their mental health, been on medications for a long period of time, and then also experiencing a lot of those psychosocial stressors due to their mental health issues, difficulties maintaining employment or housing, with relationships, things like that. The other thing we look for is if that individual would benefit from stabilizing their medications. That medication compliance is a big part of the program, if medications are deemed appropriate for them. And then also be willing to live where the mental health team can provide services. So right now, we're looking at in the Sioux Falls area, so we can provide those impact services. So the different treatments that are offered, they're, they really vary by the client. They're very personalized to what that person's struggling with and what they need help with. But basically what we're looking at is individual and group therapies, whatever that would be appropriate for that individual. We offer case management services, medication management, substance use treatment in various forms, random alcohol and drug testing on the probation side of things. The probation supervision is a more intense version of supervision than they would typically have on probation, just a little more involvement from that probation officer, and then a one-on-one judicial review. So each week, individuals come to court and they meet one-on-one with the judge and talk about how their week went, what we would like to see improve, what went well, and then we move forward. We have been going, we started in January 2020, so we've been going just over a year. We are slated to have 20 participants in our court. Right now, we do have 10, and we're continuing to look for, look through applications. We have had 40 applications since we started last year. And of those, 10 of them accepted to come into the court and were accepted by the team. So we're looking forward to filling the rest of, rest of our court and continuing to serve those folks.
Fine. Thank you for what you do there. That's a valuable service. And it, again, the treatment or the, the tasks of being involved in that are, the standards are high and we appreciate what you do. So thank you for that. So.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update.
Do you have any questions for us? Any questions?
I think we're good, but ladies, thank you very much for your time this morning.
Thank you.
You bet.
Bye.
Bye-bye. All right. Well, gonna move on to a briefing on the East Dakota Water Development District. And we're going to move item 13 off the agenda. I think I can do that and move it to next week. We're just up against a time crunch. Olivia? Okay, we'll do that after this briefing. Okay. Sounds good. This is a briefing by Jay Gilbertson on the East Dakota Water Development District. Morning, Jay.
Good morning. Good morning. I will try and race through here and get this, get on the road. I've got a couple of pending calls from some legislators who'd like to invest money in the area, so. I need to get back to the office and help them spend that money. Again, Jay Gilbertson, I'm the manager of the East Dakota Water Development District. Do I say click or go ahead? The district is a sub-unit state government like counties or cities or water project districts. It's been around since, the districts in general have been around since the late 50s. East Dakota has been in existence since 1943, or excuse me, 1963. Thinking about that money.
Jay, can you just speak into the mic a little bit more? Thank you.
There we go. How's that? All right, thank you. Anyway, next slide. The district encompasses 10 counties across the eastern side of the state. They're shown here on the, on the map. We do also extend down into Lincoln County. As the city of Sioux Falls grows, we grow with it. And that's part of our description. Next slide. We are governed by a nine-member elected board of directors from different, each represents a different director area within our area. With the city of Sioux Falls, not surprisingly, a significant number of those directors come from the greater. from the greater Sioux Falls area. Mark Anderson, Commissioner Barth, who also serves on our board, Bob Kappel and Dana Losky, and the currently vacant Area 8 Director area are from the city proper, and the seat occupied by Steve Deck at Hartford is the bulk of Minnehaha County outside of the city and the rest. So we have a lot of activity down here, a lot of support. Next slide. District staff, our main office is in Brookings, although we do, with four staff, but we do have a sort of a satellite office down here at the USDA Service Center dealing with the Big Sioux River Project. Next. The district is funded through a variety of sources. Our primary base is a tax levy. The districts have no regulatory authority. We do have a teeny-tiny little tax levability. We could go up to 30 cents per thousand, 0.3 mil. Our current rate is 2.3 cents. Commissioner Barth had asked the, the other day what that translates into, as it said, a little over 800,000 is our 2020 payable and 21 levy. Just, I think, 49% of that comes out of Minnehaha County, just a hair under 400,000 is the projected take there. We also are eligible for, and actively pursue state, federal, local grants and other assistance as is necessary. Next slide. We're involved in a lot of different activities. As I like to tell people, if water's involved, and I can talk the board into doing it, or the board directs me to do it, we can be involved in that. Frequently, we are a partner, providing technical or financial assistance, but on time to time, we take the lead in, in certain activities. Next. One of the things that I'm particularly proud of over the years is the district's role in groundwater protection. This effort started back in the late 80s, actually in Brookings County, with a cooperative effort with the district and the county and the State Geological Survey, which is where my roots are at. This evolved into what are now groundwater protection ordinances that exist on all of the, the counties shown on the imagery there, including Minnehaha County. This is a level of protection for groundwater resources that frankly is not seen anywhere else in the country. The commissioners at, at all these counties recognized the time that we're all dependent on shallow aquifers, and we needed to protect them, and everybody got together, and we have, and that's worked out quite well, so. Next one. Water festivals mentioned earlier. There are two held within our district boundaries, both of which we helped get started. The Big Sioux Water Festival in Brookings and the Sioux Empire Festival here based in Sioux Falls provide opportunities for a little over 4,000 4th graders throughout the area. We're currently working on our second generation. We have teachers who participated as students in the early 80s and 90s who are now teachers bringing their classes back to the event, and it's gone well. This year, both events will be run remotely rather than bringing folks together for in-person activities for obvious reasons. Next. We're involved with a number of different data collection activities, including a volunteer monitoring program. I'll skip past that one. Next, please. District's been involved pretty heavily, particularly the last 20 years or so, in watershed monitoring activities. Because we cover much of the Big Sioux River Basin, the state has turned to us for assistance in doing a lot of the basin-level evaluation. Like it or not, Minnehaha County is very much interested in Minnehaha County, understandably, but what happens in Moody, you only care about if it's bad and it's coming your way, and if you've got something bad and you can send it to Lincoln, great, let it be Lincoln's problem. We cover the whole system, and so we've been involved in a number of assessment activities, both in the Big Sioux River, as long as the Minnesota tributaries and various lakes and streams around the area. The current manifestation of that is a fairly extensive effort called the Rotating Basins Assessment. Next slide, please. Hopefully, you can make these out. The state is looking at sort of a rotating 10-year cycle of doing intense surface water sampling, rivers, lakes, and streams in five different sets of watersheds across the state, and then picking that up again. The pilot project was 2019, in the eastern part of the state, 2020, and now 2021, the sampling works being done in the Big Sioux River Basin, the Minnesota River Basin, and a little tiny bit of the red up in the far northeast corner being handled by our staff running through that. Starting in 2022, the shift will be to the south-central part of the state, that sort of peachy-colored area, the Lower James Vermilion, and then the watershed of Lewis and Clark Lake. And then hopefully in 2030, I'll be gone, but the program will still be here. They'll be back in the Big Sioux Basin doing an assessment, so we get a feel for whether or not the things we're doing to protect it are working. Next, please. Again, not only assessment, but also restoration efforts. Most of our problems have to do with either too much sediment erosion reduction activities, and so their effort's underway to address that. Next. The other big issue has to do with bacteria in our waters, which tend to be a lot higher than we'd like them to be. The best way to deal with this are through easements, basically for livestock exclusion in areas. Next one. Couple of examples here from Skunk Creek watershed, little map to give you some context there, but the two pictures there, left is the before and after. Those are two shots from the same year. The difference is the livestock came out, and Mother Nature brought everything back very, very quickly. And we see significant sediment reductions and dramatic reductions in bacteria loading as a result. Next, please. This is just a little chart showing the results of some work we did back in the middle part of the teens. From left to right, we're basically looking at the before situation, and then a mile downstream, a mile downstream, a mile downstream, two different years in the Skunk Creek Basin, and we were able to reduce bacteria loading in that area by about 90%, which is significant. Now, in some parts of the basin, 90% reduction still doesn't get us to where we need to be, but it's a start. Next slide. We also provide financial assistance to a variety of activities around the district. Next slide. And tech, staff can provide technical support as well, whether we're, again, we're doing some of the work or doing sampling and collection or outreach activities. Shot there, Becky Banks, a former employee, doing a nitrate testing clinic at a, I think that was the minor county farm show some number of years back. Next. Getting close to the end. Click. There we go. Yes, we wrapped that up kind of quickly. I was told to go fast, so.
Dude, I had a picture of summer.
Yeah. Sorry, this is, it's the time of year.
Jay, thank you very much. A lot of interesting photos, befores and afters, and for everything you do. Appreciate you being here this morning. Thank you.
Chairman, I think one thing that's not clear to the public is the reason the river is brown is not because of cattle waste, it's because of dirt. Dirt, a lot of it caused by cattle grazing on the shore of these creeks that erode the shore into the water and then make the river look brown. And so while there is obviously fecal material in the water, the reason it's brown is because of dirt.
Erosion. You bet. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you, Jay. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much.
I'm gonna look for a motion to move our briefing on information technology to next week.
A motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you very much. Legislative update, Carol.
Good morning, Carol Muller, Commission Office. Just a very short comment from you about 181 will be in appropriations tomorrow, and that is the one on the Veterans Cemetery Highway. 12:30 got moved to the 41st day late yesterday. So that's the one, Bill, that's top of mind for everybody.
And tomorrow morning, I will be testifying for this Veterans Highway. They're just looking to know that Minnehaha County is supportive of the highway and willing to do our part to.
Are you driving out there?
Nope, I will be doing that via Zoom, so. All righty. Any liaison reports? Commissioner.
Last night, I had the pleasure of being in this very room with dozens of other people on planning and zoning issues, and to cut to the chase, we had a suggestion of expanding a private airport, creating a residential development around it. The debate on that was an hour and a half, and in the end, the county planning and zoning commission voted unanimously in favor, and the city voted against it, I believe, five to two. So it will come back to our joint meeting with the city, and we'll learn more about the word trapezoid, which has to do with the area that the planes take off in. Certainly, the conflict was between people who had bought hundreds of acres of land and on speculation and planning on building residential developments, and then the person who lived on the land and wanted to expand his personal airport. It's interesting, it wouldn't preclude developing the, the land, it just may reduce the number of loan opportunities for people that wanted to build under the area where the planes would be taking, taking off, and that's described as trapezoid. Then we had five eligibility transfers, and then we had a expansion of the Rock Quarry, formerly owned by Merle &amp; Roy's, now owned by the Everest folks over by Rowena, and people in Iverson Estates and people that were closer to the river. What's that, that restaurant-type catering business? They weren't there, but in that area, they feel the shock when they blow stuff up, and it actually made the paper in Brandon, but that was apparently an outlier. In fact, they showed us a chart of the blasts that they've done, and there was one that was right after they took, took the property that was way out of the range of most of their blasts. And of course, people believe that their crack on their wall is caused by the blast that they felt, but, you know, you get a crack in your wall and you don't think it's because you weigh 240 pounds. But the exact reason is, you know, debatable. And they've actually gone in, the Everest people have, and taken pictures of people's houses to see if things get a lot worse. Anyway, we, we approved their expansion, and it was, both discussions were amazingly civil, and that was a pleasure that way. And it's, our planning commission for the county is great to work with, and Mike Roston with Henry Carlson is on that board, and he, he does a great job.
Thank you for your service on that board, too, Commissioner. All right. New business. Old business. Motion to recess.
So moved.
Second. Oh, public comment.
We did public.
You did public comment, yeah.
Yeah, we did public comment. Thank you. All right, motion and a second, recess. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.